You're watching Lynn Community Television's 2017 Candidate Forums with candidates running for Lynn's School Committee. Featuring Cherish Casey, Brian Castellanos, Donna Coppola, John Ford, Lorraine Gately, Elizabeth Travacio, Natasha Mejij Madri, Jessica Murphy, Jared Nicholson, and Michael Satterwhite, moderated by former Lynn Mayor Al DiVigilio.
Good evening, and welcome to Lynn Community Television's live Lynn School Committee Debate. I'm Bob Tucker, President of the Board of Directors at Lynn Community Television. With me tonight is Richard Carpenter, the Treasurer of the Board of Directors here at Lynn Community Television. We have three other board members, Michael Currit, I'm sorry, Joseph Currit, Michael Sorrelli, and Michael Marks. Tonight, I wanted to tell you a little bit about Lynn Community Television. We are a two-year-old Lynn organization media station that is located at 181 Union Street. And membership is open to all Lynn residents. I hope Lynn residents would take advantage to come down, look at the studio, get involved in the Lynn Community Television. Tonight, I want to thank our staff for putting together these debate forums. I particularly also want to thank all candidates for Lynn School Committee for agreeing to participate in tonight's debate. And a thank you to our former mayor, Al DiVigilio, for agreeing to be the moderator of tonight's debate. And tonight, this debate will be coming to you live from 181 Union Street.
Thank you, Bob, and good evening, everyone. As Bob said, my name is Richard Carpenter. I'm the Treasurer for Lynn Community Television. I just want to take a moment first to just praise the leadership that Bob Tucker has shown as President of our Board over the past two years. We've come a long way. We've done some great things. And that will culminate tonight with all of these debates for the next week. We have a beautiful new studio constructed here, and things are going well. And we want you to know that we intend to make Lynn Community Television the number one community television organization on the North Shore of Boston. I want to take a second also to praise our staff, also David, and to Pedro and Mukala in the control room to our left. These guys have done great work, and really worked out to make this all a reality. To the candidates, I wish you all the best of luck. You know, we have really a great group of candidates this year in all fields, and it's a credit to our city. And Bob and I and Al know how hard it is, and we have tremendous respect for anyone who puts their name on the ballot. So with that, we're going to turn it over to our former colleague in government, Mayor Al DiVigilio, as our moderator for the evening.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Bob. Tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates that are running for school committee on a variety of issues. We have developed the questions that we'll be asking in collaboration with the staff here, and they will include topics that have been seen in social media that the public have shown interest in. Our timekeeper is Jack Suslak. There will be no opening statements, as I've mentioned to all of you before. The questions will be, first question will be asked starting from my left, and we'll go around. And if we have time to go to more questions than nine, we'll continue to go around a second time. You'll have 90 seconds to answer the question. Timekeeper, Jack Suslak, Democratic City Chairman, Pastor Ryan Knight, will hold up a red card when there's, a yellow card first, when there's 30 seconds to go. When there's 10 seconds left, he'll hold up a red card. And when the time is up, he'll stop waving the card, and I'll probably just ask the next question to the next person at that point. Please be mindful of the time. I won't really cut you short, but when you see that, try to get your thoughts together and wind up your statement on a fashion that would be easy. At the conclusion, we will give each candidate 90 seconds for a closing statement, not 90 minutes, as I said before, Brian, okay? We are located down here on Union Street. For the older people who are watching tonight, this used to be the location of Cindy's Donut Shop. John Ford might remember when it first opened up. It was also the site of the First National Store, and it was a big deal when it opened up here in Union Street. And for people who go way back, it's across the street from where we used to go to Johnny Joyce and get a chopped ham sandwich with mustard and lettuce on it. So for those people who are a little bit senior, I think you'll remember that, and you'll know where we're broadcasting from tonight. To each of the members, you are taking on a responsibility that's perhaps not recognized as how important it is as a member of the school committee because you're dealing with the future of the kids in the city of Lynn. I hope that we have some questions that will prove interesting for you tonight, and also will give the citizens of some Lynn some in-depth understanding of who you are and how you feel about various topics and subjects. So we will begin with the first question, and that first question will go to Brian, who's immediately next to me tonight. What do you think of the current state of education in the city of Lynn? And in answering that question, would you also indicate how many school committee meetings you may have gone to that may have perked your interest in running for the school committee?
Well, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. That's a great question. You know, I want to recite, it's the future of our kids, and the state of education is very important. You know, I just spoke in front of the Lynn Teachers Union a few weeks ago. I fully fund our education system. It's very important to note that it is important to really invest in our kids' education, and that, you know, I used to work in Middlesex County. I worked for Bill Ricker House of Corrections, and also I was a human service coordinator for Wayside Youth and Family. So I wasn't unable to make the meetings, but I used to watch the meetings on YouTube and actually just watch the cast afterwards. I used to be able to pay attention to what policy decisions were being made, and I studied, you know, what the climate was at the time. This is about three years, four years ago, and I've always been in tune and just passionate about our state of education because I've always been impacted by education, being a first-generation, low-income student myself. It's always been amazing to see from the national state into the local level. In our state of education right now, we're going through some changes. We have additional resources that we need to really increase our state of education, and I know we're working hard in our public school systems to really achieve this goal and this vision that we have as a city.
Thank you. Could you just, I'm going to ask each of you if you give a grade too, like the President. A, B, C, D, how do you think the system is? U, and then, yeah, just in fairness, because I didn't, I'm going to ask everybody else to...
Oh, okay. I'd give it an A minus.
A minus, okay. Next candidate is Donna Coppola, same question, Donna?
Okay. Well, as far as the state of education in the city of Lynn, the world's changing, and schools need to change right along with it. And I think that we in the Lynn Public Schools System have made a great effort in a lot of ways to make changes. Nothing's ever going to change. You're still going to need reading, writing, arithmetic, the three I's. But things that are really changing are automation is changing so quickly, and technology is changing so quickly that we have to change right along with it. We have 16,000 children, and we have lots of programs that are available that fit every student. We have kids that are in advanced placement classes. We have a lot of regular ed classes, a lot of variety, our tech. We should be proud of the technical school that we have. And then we're also looking at our high school kids, not just talking about college, but also talking about the technology state that is changing for them. But I think that we're working hard, and there can be improvements, and I'd give it a B.
Thank you. Next, we have John Ford. I served with his dad on the City Council a few years ago. John?
Thank you. I think right now the academic situation in Lynn is sound, is very sound. Academically, we're doing very well. I spoke to the superintendent today. The MCAS results are in. Something I'm very interested in is how we did in the, what they call the governor's urban districts. And these are the Lawrence's, the Lowell's, the Springfield's, the Worcester's, the communities I think we should be compared against because demographically, that's who we measure up with. And we are number one in science, and we're percentage points out of, in second place in both math and English. A meeting will be due tomorrow. We're going to go over more in depth on how we did in the MCAS, but I think every year we do well. We have some real struggles. I think MCAS is not a good, not a good testing measurement. I think the fact that, you know, some kids have a very large disadvantage taking the MCAS, and their scores are equal. But I think overall, I would give the Lynn School System an A. I think academically, we're doing well. We've got a real population problem, but I think somehow we manage the teachers in Lynn do a great job, and we do, and we continue to turn out a good product.
Next, we have Lorraine Gately. Lorraine?
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. The state of education in Lynn, Massachusetts is increasing and doing better every single year. Last year, I was quite impressed with the fact that the CPI, the Composite Performance Index, which I like to look at, which puts the MCAS on a scale of 1 to 100. I was very pleased to see that most of our schools are in the 70s or high 70s and going up. We have several schools in Level 1 and 2. Our number of Level 3 schools are going down. And I was very impressed that, you know, if you saw the news last night, you heard about all these schools that were like not doing, school systems not doing well because of the new MCAS 2 test that was, the results came out. And Lynn held its own. We're still at Level 3, and I think we'll maintain Level 3 until we can get every single school in our district to Level 2. And that's what I would like to see happen. That's what I'm striving for, is excellence in our education. If I was to give Lynn Public Schools a grade, I would say they were between a B and a B+ and we're working our way into an A. I'm very proud of our teachers. They work very hard to implement the curriculums that have been developed to move our schools ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have Elizabeth Travacio.
Yes. So I think our schools have done, have had great improvement in the last five to 10 years. We're currently, our graduation rate is 7.3%. It has improved 17% since 2006, and I think that's phenomenal. However, I think there's a point where we've become a little bit stagnant, and we have to do more in the school systems. It's not enough to be a Level 3 district. We need to move it to a Level 2 district. And I think that's something that we can all work on, and we can all agree on. You know, our teachers, we have some great teachers. We have some hard-working teachers. They're not in ideal conditions at times to teach our students, and that's something that we definitely, I think, need to work on as well. But you know, there's different populations in Lynn that have different disadvantages. There's a big number of English-language learners, and we need to figure out what the best way it is to teach them and to make sure that they improve at the same speed as other children. And I think that's crucial in order to bring our school systems to another level and to a level of excellence. I've been, I think you mentioned the school committee, so I have not been, unfortunately, to any school committee meetings. I was working full-time mom and full-time work, so I watch a lot of them online just to see what's going on. And my experiences with the Lynn Public School Systems have really propelled me to run for a school committee. If I had to give a grade, I would say we were a B and move in towards an A.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Natasha Mejij Madri. Close enough?
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Okay, Natasha. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for having me, and thank you for the question. I feel like the state of education here in Lynn can definitely be improved. I feel that the teachers are working really hard every day. I never realized how hard it was teaching until I was a substitute teacher in Lynn, and now I have a new respect for teachers. It's really hard what they deal with every single day, and many classes are overcrowded. Lynn as a whole is a Level 3 district, so I feel that that's not okay. I would like to see us be a Level 1 district, not Level, not even Level 2. So when people are looking in to see where they want to move and where they want to live, they always look to the schools to see what type of schools we have. So we need to always strive for higher. And I always teach my kids to reach for the stars, so I don't think we should be settling for a Level 3. We should definitely be Level 1. And if I had to give a grade to the schools, I would give a B minus because I do not feel, like I don't think they're failing, but I do think we need a lot of improvement as well. And I did go to several school committee meetings over the years, and I was part of ALPOVE, which is Lynn Parents Organizing for Better Education, and we organized around several different issues, and we attended many meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Jessica Murphy?
Thank you. Thank you for having us here. So to address the state of Lynn schools currently, I have a daughter who's now in kindergarten, and so my experience with the schools has actually been impressive. I've been really impressed with the way the school she's been at, and her teachers, and how hard they all work, and the resources that are available at the schools. I think those are all great. I also think that, as was mentioned earlier, that there are families who, who I know who have left the city of Lynn because of the school districts. And I don't think it's acceptable for us in the city of Lynn to allow people to choose other communities over ours because of the schools. I think we need to strive to make schools the reason people are moving to Lynn, or one of the reasons that people are moving to Lynn. I think we need to be able to work, you know, with all of the entire community. There are a lot of different ethnicities and groups. There are a lot of different languages that are spoken, and I think we need to reach out to parents to get them involved. And as far as a grade is, I would give the Lynn schools a B. Again, I give them that because, you know, it's not just what's going on in the schools, but it's also a perception of people researching the schools. And as far as the committee meetings go, I am also a full-time mom. I work full-time, and so I have been able to access the committee meetings online, which I think is a great resource for people to see.
Thank you. And next, we have Jared Nicholson, incumbent.
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you for having us. So I think there's so much to be proud of in Lynn Public Schools, and that's really a testament to our wonderful teachers and educators in the system and the great students and families we have. So there is a lot to be proud of. I think we can continue to do better. You know, we perform really well relative to our urban peers, which Mr. Ford was talking about, and that's important. And that's a benchmark that we should be proud of and continue to measure ourselves against because we know that there's a lot that goes on outside the classroom that affects the performance that shows up in these metrics that we're looking at. At the same time, I think that we can have as a goal for the future for us to compare well to all peers. And that is a lofty goal because we know that there's a lot that happens in districts in the surrounding areas that our kids don't have access to, or there are things that our kids are dealing with that aren't being dealt with in other districts. But if it's going to happen, then the Lynn Public Schools needs to lead the way. So it will require a lot of help from other agencies, other levels of government, for us to partner to help kids meet those needs, but I think that should be the goal. For the, for the grade at Lynn Public Schools, I would give us a B+. I think our teachers and students are doing wonderful work. We have a lot of great programs, but there's definitely room to continue to improve.
Great, thank you. Last but not least, Michael Satterwhite. Mike?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about public schools. I have a daughter that's in Lynn Public Schools, and she attends Lynn Woods in the 4th grade, and they are a school that is happy to hang the banners of success. And as Lorraine discussed earlier, the Composite Performance Index is a good way to measure the state of education in our city. That's more so for legacy MCAS, and the average for the city is actually 73, which is average. If you look into the numbers that were published as of yesterday for the next-generation MCAS, there's a different type of grading, and that's the average skilled score. And for the city of Lynn, we were at 491.7. If you compare that to the highest score in school district, Lexington, they were at 519.3. So if you look at those numbers, you should be proud that the city is not too far from the best. And if you look visibly at the state of the education, you'll see that we have some challenges with regards to the budget, the overcrowding, and those are the things that we need to address in order to fully utilize the tools that we currently have in place, and that's utilizing the great educators we have in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go around with our second series of questions to people watching. In case anybody's unaware, we do have the candidates running tonight, and you're going to elect six. So that as you're viewing the candidates tonight, keep that in mind, that you'll be having six votes to elect out of the nine candidates, one who is not present tonight. Next candidate tonight that we're going to start the second round of questions with is Donna Coppola. Donna, I didn't mean to slight you, but I did serve with your husband, Harry. As I mentioned, I served with John Ford's dad. The question is, how would you increase parental involvement in the different schools in Lynn? How would you make parents feel welcome?
Well, I think the most important thing is that parents are their child's first teacher and as well as their best advocate. Nobody knows a child better than their parents or the guardians that have care for them. So I think it's really important that parents be involved, but we also need in Lynn Public Schools to make them feel welcome in the schools. Bring them in and make them feel wanted there, and let them know that their involvement is really important. Parents that are involved in the schools and support the teachers and support the principals and any programs that are being run in the schools are, actually, their children do better. So it's really important that they, that people stay abreast of what's going on. I was an active parent when my kids were going through the schools and had a lot of fun with other parents, getting to know the other parents. One particular thing was we joined together Lincoln Thompson with Lynn Woods, and we put on a great program that, but we labeled it Chocolate Buffet, Bring Your Best Chocolate Dessert. And we had a author there, and the place was packed, and we just had a lot of fun. So I think it's really important that parent involvement be there.
Thank you. Same question, John?
Yeah, I have always felt that parental involvement is critical. If the, if the school day doesn't end at the bell, if it carries over into the home, the child benefits from this greatly. And I think that we do a pretty good job of trying to get parents involved, but it's very difficult. You've got, most parents now are from, they both work. It's, the time in the home is very limited, and, you know, we make attempts to get them to come in pizza night. We try to encourage them to come to family nights. It's slowly getting better, but it's a difficult task with the current situation we live in. Also, there's a language barrier. A lot of parents have, feel either uncomfortable when they come, and, you know, we do have translators. We're making it as, trying to make it as comfortable as possible we can. But it is something that we need to continue. I think it's so vital to the children. I know when I was, when I was growing up, my parents were very involved. I had to bring my school day home, and we'd talk about it. We'd talk about homework. We'd do homework together, my own kids. My wife and I would do homework with them and, you know, make sure they were ready for the next day. A child loses a lot of this if they don't have the parents and they don't have the school day being discussed in the home.
Thank you. Next, Lorraine Gately.
Well, I have this unique opportunity as a student in Lynn Public Schools with a family similar to John's, where we would sit around and do homework together and talk about what we did, but that was years ago. So now, as a former teacher and a parent of a student, I know that parents have to advocate for their child. And I always supported the parents that came in on Parents Night or the students that you never get to see their parents because they're too busy working, and they're working sometimes two or three jobs, and they don't get a chance to come in and advocate for their own child. I've been really pushing on the committee to try to get a homework help program so that students that have parents that are working three jobs, and some of them are just to make enough money to put food on the table and provide their kids with things that they would get help with their homework. And it's really important because the curriculum keeps changing, the standards keep increasing, and a lot of parents don't even know how to help their students for homework. So parent involvement is crucial.
Thank you very much, Lorraine. Next, we have Elizabeth.
Thank you. So in my case, I was a first-generation American, so I had the, I had the experience where my parents did not know the language, did not have the love of education, where they felt they could be involved and advocate for me. So one of my points is that I really think we need to empower parents and equip them with the proper tools to advocate on behalf of their children. That's crucial. When it comes to reaching out to parents, we need to make sure we work around their schedules. We need to address language barriers. We need to figure out what their barriers are for them to come and, come and participate in school activities and then break those barriers. It's not an easy task. It never is, but we need to figure it out. One of the things that I had thought about is really reaching out to parents and going to the places where they feel comfortable, whether it's their churches or civic groups where they all, where they're there, and, you know, go in and talk to them so they know who you are, so they feel a little bit more comfortable, so they feel like they have a friend in the public school system. I think that that would help. Another thing is I think our school system and our administration should reflect the diversity of Lynn, and we should do more to make sure that we have people that look like them because it makes it easier for a parent to go if they feel that they're going to find somebody there that understands them, that understands not just their language, but their challenges raising their kids in a new country or in a country where they don't really just know the language.
Thank you. Next, we have Natasha. You may want to, because I've noticed on the screen, they don't have your name up, so people who will know who they want to vote for, when you begin each time, don't feel bad about stating your name. I'm calling you by your first name, but this is here to get votes tonight, and you want them to remember your last name. They're not going to vote on your first name, so don't hesitate to mention your full name before you start answering each question. Might be helpful.
Thank you. So my name is Natasha Mejij Madri. I'm number 10 on the ballot, all the way in the bottom. And the reason, parent engagement is my favorite topic, so I love parent engagement. I really, it's one of the biggest things, that's the most crucial thing for a child. I feel that parents, when they're more involved, the students are more successful as a whole. I think it should be a partnership between the parents, the teachers, and the students. It should all work like in a triangle, so we need to all work together to make sure that students are successful. And the way to make parents more involved is to make it very easy for parents to be involved, so we need to have meetings at a convenient time. We need to also have childcare available for little kids, and we need to make sure that we have food as well. I also think meetings need to be at 6:00 PM because most parents do work, so I think that 6:00 PM tends to work better for most parents, and we could also alternate a little bit. Maybe once a month have a meeting that could happen during the, during the day as well. So like parents, and not only just parents, but grandparents in Lynn, there's a ton of grandparents also raising their grandkids, and they need to really feel welcome at the school. So make sure whatever language they speak is also provided, so we need to make sure we do a better job at providing translators and, as well as giving notices in proper time. Thank you.
Jessica?
So my name is Jessica Murphy. When I was a kid, my parents were involved in some way when I went to school. My mom worked nights, and my dad worked late. So often, I came home from school, and there was nobody at home. I had to let myself in. I had to do my own homework, and I had to take care of what I needed to do by myself. But it takes a village. It takes a village to raise kids. My parents couldn't attend activities. They couldn't attend band concerts. They couldn't attend a lot of these things because they had to work. But I was always able to make the events. They found a neighbor who could drive me, or a friend's parent who could take me, and so I was able to participate. What I would like to see is more activities focused on the school. I'd like to see fundraisers at the school. I'd like to see more spaghetti dinners and more social events so that parents can get together and meet other parents who have the same circumstances that they do or have the same languages that they do, and so that we can create small communities, and each of these small communities can help support the kids throughout the school. So really, what I would like to see is, you know, A, it's kind of a double, you know, it does two things at once. We can try to raise some money for the schools. We can try to bring our community together, and we can try to bring our communities into our schools, which is one of my main goals of why I want to be on the school committees. I think the communities and the schools need to work together.
Thank you, Jessica. Jared?
Thank you, Jared Nicholson. And I think parent involvement is huge and really important, and we need to do, we need to be careful to be encouraging the involvement, not just parents, but any guardians we have in the system. And we do that by creating a welcoming... And we do that by creating a welcoming environment, by communicating to parents that they have a real role and a stake in their children's education. One of the things I was struck by in looking at some research that Lynn Public Schools did a few years ago is that one of the biggest barriers that parents identified to being more involved in their children's education was that they didn't feel qualified. And I think that in the schools, we know that parent involvement is really important and that you don't need to have ace that assignment when you took it or even taken that assignment at all. You can make a difference by asking questions and by showing support and by communicating the priority. And so I think there's more that we can do to help bridge that gap, given that we know that parents can be that helpful. One of the things I did in my first term is I worked with the Maria Center to organize a college fair on a weekend, partnering with the schools, in Spanish language. The Maria Center reached out to representatives from colleges all over New England and they presented materials in Spanish on financial aid and the college application process. And I think examples like that are really important and something we should continue.
Matthew Satterwhite.
Michael Satterwhite.
Michael, no, sorry. Thinking of my son, Matt. Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. Michael Satterwhite. Donna, just so you know, Lynn Woods is still fond of fudge. It's actually the fundraiser for the fall. So we're actually selling fudge at Lynn Woods now. And I'm involved with my child's school. It's important. I know that John and Lorraine talked about their parents would sit with them at the table and they would go over the schoolwork and really delve into it with their kids, just to show that there is a collaboration between parent or guardian or grandparent or uncle with the school and the educator because that's extremely important. I know that for my daughter's school, we have to sign for all the homework assignments or anything that she takes home. We have to acknowledge that we received it, that we reviewed it, and that we went over it with her. And I think that that's a good thing. It actually holds us accountable. There's a, there's a stake with regards to the success of our children that involves the entire city. You know, when one kid succeeds, that's, that's good for everyone. I did agree with Natasha that the makeup and Jared of family is not always going to be a mom and a dad. It could be just a mom, a single parent, or a father, just a single father. And it could be people like me. I'm an uncle of my niece who attends a shoemaker and I'm the one that actually appears at the open houses because I have a vested interest in her success. So it's important to understand that parent involvement is extremely important.
Thank you. Brian?
Thank you. So parent, so when we, when we think about parental involvement, the first word that comes to my mind is team. It takes a team to really build up a successful engagement and to create practices and strategies to include in our, in our school system. It really, it takes a lot. We need to bring parents to the decision table. I think it's vital to have them be a part of the process and their child being educated. There's so many stakeholders involved. Other than teachers, we have also human service providers who, you know, attend IEP meetings and, you know, sometimes it's discouraging for some people who are involved in human services to really, you know, have that confidence to communicate with school officials. We need to really understand that there are PTOs and PTAs as well that promote the collaboration and enhance and educate parents who don't have the confidence to negotiate and speak with those personnel in the school departments. I think it's very important to note that it's advocacy. Parental advocacy is, it's huge. You know, the learning starts at home and some, some households are not ideal. We have single-parent households in the city of Lynn. Our kids are different in Lynn. We have different variety of issues that we all face in our school system that really, you know, in order to achieve a successful, oh, sorry, I missed out on my time. 90 seconds. That was good.
Hey, you get 10 seconds.
Oh, oh, sorry. We need persistency in our communication and I think it's very important to have that across the, across the table and have parents have a voice at the table as well.
Very good. Thank you. Before we start the third question, just a, I thought that I'd throw to all of you is, when I was mayor, I found it very important for community and school involvement to have all the PTA presidents or PTO officers meet with me once a month in my office so that they could exchange ideas and communicate with each other. And that also made it very effective when we had referendums for school construction to vote because the people were united, all the schools together and they had been meeting. I had a person in the office that directly was responsible for parent involvement. And you might want to consider that when you become on board that rather than just inviting them to a school committee meeting, they only come when there's an interest that pertains to them, is maybe this general type of informal setting to get more involvement that way? Just throw that out. The next question, though, okay? Lynn has many older school buildings in horrible shape. Do you plan to reactivate the plans for Pickering Junior High? And also, we've got a couple of elementary schools that are over 100 years old that perhaps should be, we should be considering. What steps would you take to ensure that there's no further delay in construction and that we go forward with the new Pickering Junior High School? First, John Ford.
John Ford, thank you. This is my, my favorite subject. I've been on the building committee for the Marshall Middle School. We did a great job with that. We got it in under budget on time. We now need additional buildings. We've got 143-year-old schools inland. The Pickering School we're trying to replace is 110 years old. The average age of our infrastructure right now is 80 years old. It has to be addressed. I don't think there's any way that we could proceed with this unless we go back to the MSBA as a school building authority and ask them to pick up where we left off. There's a $750,000 feasibility study that we've already paid for. If we scrap the initiative and start all over again, we have to pay another 100, $750,000 feasibility study. So I think it's critical that we pick up, the MSBA is looking very favorably on Lynn in spite of the vote. And I think it's going to be incumbent on a, on the mayor, whoever is the mayor, to try to get back with the MSBA because no matter how you look at it, they say they give you 80%. They really only give you about 63, 65%. But that's 65 cents on a dollar. And if you're talking $100 million building, you're talking $65 million. I don't think we can, we can get away without using that money.
Thank you. Lorraine?
Lorraine Gately. I'm currently on the school committee and I totally agree with John. I would love to get back into the pipeline for the new Pickering. I sort of agree with the mayor. He mentioned a good point, that parent involvement on this, getting together with the neighborhoods and talking to the neighbors and going over the plan would help with moving that down the line. I also think that if we want to get that building voted on, we may want to consider having an election in the fall rather than having an IMAG. Good communication with the neighbors and the neighborhoods, going over the plan, explaining the plan clearly so there wasn't any, any confusion because there was a lot of confusion. And as far as the other buildings are concerned in the city of Lynn, ISD has been holding their, their own, using school committee or school funding to maintain our buildings and they're doing the best that they can, but we definitely have to move forward on our schools.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Travasio, number 7 on the ballot. So I agree with John and Lorraine. We definitely need to go back to MSBA and figure out how we can get them to fund the new schools and work with them. But we really need to have an organized campaign where we're informing residents of Lynn exactly how we came to this decision and why this is the best decision. I mean, they already voted down these schools. So just bringing it to the table again is not going to be sufficient and it's not going to be enough. We have to have a strategy to make sure that if this comes to a vote again, that we succeed in the vote. I also think we need to advocate with our state legislature and with the governor to see, to get more money to rebuild schools and to fix schools that are damaged. I mean, children cannot learn in the types of conditions that they're in in Pickering. It's just not conducive to their learning. So we need to work on that. I also think there's federal funds that are out there that we can try to tap into. There's money out there. We need to look for it. Something that would probably help us a lot, which has come up a lot, is really having a grant writer in the city that can help our schools, that can help our teachers, that can help our mayor, look for grants, look for foundation money to help bring more money into the budget and to help rebuild these schools. I think it's critical that we go back to the drawing board and see how we can make sure that this gets passed and we can build, and we can build a new Pickering and we can rebuild a lot of the old infrastructure that we have.
Thank you. Natasha?
Thank you. So my name again is Natasha Meji Madri. I'm number 10 on the ballot. I would have to say I agree with everything the four of you just said. So I really feel that Pickering needed to be replaced. In order to make something like that a vote go through, we needed to speak to more people. We needed to have more, more voter contact. So we needed to, if the whole, entire city is going to vote on something, we need to have community meetings in every part of the city. It can't just be in certain parts that are going to be affected because it's just not going to work out. I definitely feel that we need to go back to the drawing board and we need to make sure that, that we don't waste the $750,000 that we already spent on the feasibility study because I hate to see that money go to waste because there's so much more that could have happened with that money and we need to do better than that. So we don't want to have to start completely over. But the Pickering does need to be replaced and we really need to take a look at a plan on how to maintain our schools because we can build a new school, but if we're not maintaining them properly, they're going to fall into disrepair again. So we need to make sure that we've taken care of our schools and so they can all stay in conditions that are good for our kids. We don't, I don't want the teachers or the kids to go to schools in terrible conditions and it's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Jessica Murphy. I 100% agree with having a grant writer. We absolutely need a grant writer in this city. We need to find more money for the city in many areas, including the schools, but most especially for our schools. Our schools are in disrepair and we need to find as much money as is out there that we can tap into in order to repair those schools. As far as moving forward with the new schools, I think absolutely we have to have a plan to get the community involved. The community didn't buy into the first plan. I personally never heard any information until two weeks before the vote about what was going on with the schools, why we needed the schools, other than what was happening on social media. We want to put the schools here. We don't, you know, the schools can't go here, that kind of stuff. We need the community and the entire city of Lynn to understand why we need these new schools. It's not just, hey, we're taking land and we're putting new schools because we feel like our schools are old. They have to understand that we are, we're suffering from overpopulation and the population is just continuing to grow. And as far as the city, the city plans, they're just trying to plan to build more housing. So the more housing, the more kids are going to come into the city and we have to have room to put them all here. So we absolutely need to revisit this plan again and we have to, again, get the community involved. We need to have community meetings and we need to get the community to buy into the process.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you, Jared Nicholson. So I 100% agree that we need to go back to the MSBA and restart the process and use what we've already done to get here and learn from what happened in the spring. You know, I think that the physical state of our schools is really, it's a reflection of the priority that we put in education as a city. And as a school committee member, I know that we care more about education than the physical state of our schools would suggest. I know that teachers care more. I know that our families care more. And I know that the voters of the city care more. And even voters that, that did not vote in favor of the two new schools proposal this spring, I think going around talking to voters as I've been campaigning and getting that feedback, people understand that investment, education requires an investment, but we just need to learn from what happened last time. And I think, you know, we, when we think about the future of the city, there's, the city has a lot of physical capital needs, a lot of investments we need to make. And we need to have sort of a comprehensive picture of how our school investments or education investments relate to other physical capital investments on the city side. And I think that, you know, ultimately, we need to have long-term commercial growth to improve our financial situation, but as we have residential growth now, think about how people benefiting from residential growth can help us with the school situation.
Thank you. Michael?
Michael Satterwhite, thank you. And just to respond to Jessica, I actually attended Pickering in 1998 and back then we, we needed a new Pickering. Pickering's an old school and it's in, it's been in a similar condition for quite a bit of time. We have a large school district. We do need new schools. I think the vote turned out the way it did because of the locations, but we have 25 public schools. That's a large school district. And I know other cities and towns around the area actually elect school committee members based off of the ward or the area where they reside. And they do that because these individuals have a vested interest in that particular ward or, or community and it's easier to hold them accountable if the schools are just not in the condition that the citizens of that ward or that area desire those to be in. It's important to have a larger vision of, of all the schools in, in our city and understand that we do, we need new schools. I don't want to waste the money that we've already spent on those reports. I've reviewed the 1,500-page report that's available online and I saw that, you know, it's not just Pickering that's in disrepair. You have Breed and you have other schools that need work. And if we get back into it and look at all the information that's actually provided to us and we include the community, I think that we'll have a different outcome next time around.
Thank you. Brian?
Brian Castellanos, 9 on the ballot. We need new buildings. Students and educators shouldn't have to be in buildings that are 75 years and older. I've done, I've knocked on thousands of, thousands of doors this campaign season. I've met with lots of teachers and parents who, who voice their concerns about, you know, the condition of the public schools, especially Pickering. We lost that opportunity. I think we need to revisit with MSBA, go back, break down what happened and we have to move forward. We have to get on the, on the table to negotiate a process to get new schools. Part of that, I feel like a lot of, there's a lot of critique, critics out there. I think it's important to realize that we do need to develop a comprehensive strategic plan to really address this issue because right now we are in a deficit to the city. I've been to numerous debates and forums with the mayor's races and council races and there is a lack of funding, but we need to think outside the box, collaborate with the community, be transparent and accountable with the process. We need to really generate other means of dollars. We approved the crowd-rise funding in the school committee not too long ago, which we could create alumni boards, which our state public schools utilize now to offer other means of dollars. Nah, 90 seconds is all.
Thank you. Donna Capola?
My name is Donna Capola and along with John, I did sit on the building committee for the building of not just Pickering, but also a need for an additional fourth middle school in West Lynn. Both of these things are very, very important and I think that definitely we need to go back to the MSBA and try again. But before we do that, we need to get everybody on board in the community. Sitting on that committee, I do know that there were things that, you know, could have been done differently. One in particular is, we did have many, many meetings, but they weren't televised, nor were they in the evening or on the weekends. They were only really held during the daytime, morning or afternoon, and that definitely was a problem for people that are in the community. So that, that part needs to be addressed. The other thing is, I don't want people to think that places weren't looked at because we did have 13 sites that we looked at. But the other big thing that you have to understand is, I think the committee was trying to do it at the least amount of cost of owning the, the pieces of land and not having to buy, which would cost us more. Thank you.
Thank you. Following up a little bit on that question, there was a, a young lady from West Lynn, name was Doris Koconos. Maybe some of you might, older people might know her. She was the head cook at Classical High School for many years. She asked me to ask you, she goes to the senior center, she's from West Lynn still, but she goes to the senior center at Swanskyt High School. And she wants to know if you would consider in your deliberations about building the new Pickering Junior High or another school, doing what Swanskyt did and perhaps incorporate a senior center into the building that would be able to take advantage and multi-use the cafeteria and gym and things of that sort. So we'd like to know, just very quickly, if you would give that type of thing a consideration. Doris would like to know. And then the second part of the question would be, discuss what you think about the discuss what you think about the STEM program in Lynn. First respondent would be Lorraine Gately.
All right. Well, you know, it's funny. Someone just mentioned about a senior center and incorporating it in a school or at Swampscott to me. And it's a great idea. I would love to see it happen. What happens is like students could do a community service and they could work with the seniors in the senior center and they could help them with like computer use or cellphone use and different ideas like that. And it really, really, really benefits the seniors and it would also benefit the students because they could be doing community service. I absolutely love STEM. Science, technology, engineering, math is what I taught for 33 years. I now teach Introduction to Engineering Design over at St. Mary's since I retired and I'm so happy to say the same program is right over at Tech, Introduction to Engineering Design and their engineer program. Over at Classical, in English, we have a Cisco program that the students are learning how to program computers, rebuild computers, as well as go around and help in the school. Big, big... I love K-8 engineering design process. Students' eyes light up. They love STEM. I don't know what else to say about it. It's the best thing since science.
Elizabeth?
So, in regards to incorporating a senior center within the schools, I actually think it's a great idea. I mean, I think the children would benefit from the experience of seniors. I also think that they could help the seniors learn more about technology. They can do community service. It's a great bonding experience. So, I would be in favor of considering that. I think it's an excellent idea. In regards to STEM, I think we're doing a lot in STEM and I think we can do more and we should do more. And just going back to the piece of searching out... Searching for money. There's money out there. There's a lot of grants out there for STEM to improve our STEM projects in our schools and we should be looking for that money. You know, my daughter is a freshman at Lynn English and she's done a lot of the STEM program throughout her school career and she... It excites her. She loves it. She loves it. And I think that's great. And actually, bringing it in to the kids, like through starting at kindergarten, is very positive and we should do a lot more of that. Women are one of the... Women are really underrepresented in the STEM field. So, getting a lot of these children, especially this girl, interested at a young age, I think is very beneficial to them and it gives them a different career path. And just from the Department of Ed, I saw that there's going to be a 62% increase in biomedical engineers... In jobs for biomedical engineers. I mean, those are jobs that our kids can have access to. Thank you.
Very good. Natasha?
Thank you. Natasha Meji Madri, again, number 10 on the ballot. So, I think to you, Doris, I think that's a great idea to have seniors as part of the new school. I think that would be amazing. Like, I would love to see kids doing community service and there's so many seniors in Lynn that could benefit from that. So, I would definitely be in favor of that. I would advocate for that for sure because I definitely feel that the seniors are underrepresented and definitely need more programs and more. And I think to use a building for more than one use is a great idea. I definitely would support it. As far as STEM, I definitely feel like my counterparts here have said is that the STEM program is great. Like, I think STEM is amazing, like especially with girls because I really do agree that women... We teach our girls at a young age that they can do anything, right? And my daughter, right now, she's studying... She's a freshman at University of San Francisco, so she wants to be a doctor. So, STEM is so important and I would definitely encourage that and make sure that we have enough money to fund that program for sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica?
I just want to clear up real quick for Michael and anybody else who misunderstood what I was saying earlier about the schools and not hearing anything about it. There was no campaign to get out about the schools. There was nobody who came and knocked on my door. There was no paperwork. So, I just wanted to kind of clear that up. I think that's really important in moving forward. And as far as using the schools as a community center, I think that's a great idea. One of the things that I really stand for is community service in our schools, especially for the older age kids. I think community service... Mandatory community service in the school districts actually improves and increases the graduation rates. So, I think it'd be really great to partner our kids with the community. And again, we're bringing the community and the schools together. That's great. That's what we really need in the city. As far as the STEM program, I think the STEM program's great and I think there's always room to improve it. I actually am... I went to school as an audio engineer. So, I was in the sciences. I worked as a woman in a man's field for a very long time and I still do. But even the Girl Scouts of America, I'm a Girl Scout troop leader, they recognize how important STEM is. STEM is now being introduced at the Daisy level, kindergartners, first graders. So, yes, the STEM programs are great and that we should introduce them as early as we can because that really is the future of our kids and we want our kids to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared?
Thank you. Jared Nicholson. Absolutely would love to take a look at the idea of partnering the construction of a new senior center with the construction of a new school. I think that could be a really productive partnership and opportunity. So, thank you for that suggestion. On STEM, STEM is hugely important. I've heard people talk about STEAM too, as in science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics, to include that as well. And I think that the district is doing some good work in STEM. Our... As Mr. Ford mentioned earlier, our science MCAS scores have been positive that were just released this week. And one of the real differentiating factors I think we have in Lynn on STEM is that we have a vocational technical district... Vocational technical school in our district. And that's really unique. And one of the things we did in this past term that I've been really excited about is we have a new after-school program for students around the district, high schools around the district, who aren't necessarily go to tech, but to participate in a program after school at tech to leverage those resources and learn job skills. And one of those programs is the graphic design shop. And in just... Over the course of the life of that program, they can put together a portfolio that they would be able to use to go to design school. And I think... So, that's a unique offering that we have in Lynn and I think that's a... Those kinds of programs are important to build on. On STEM generally, the opportunities coming out of Boston and Cambridge allow for a lot of partnerships for us in STEM. We can continue to pursue those. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Michael?
Thank you. Michael Satterwhite. Since the age of 11, I've volunteered with Volunteers of America with their Senior Citizen Program. And they have a wealth of knowledge and they show compassion like no other. I believe that yesterday, John and Lorraine and I attended the Mass Senior Action event and that question was actually asked after the debate last night to the mayors. You know, "When are we going to have a new senior center?" And they said, "We have no funding." But this is a good fix. This is a good compromise to be able to include them in it. And with their knowledge and with their compassion, I think the students would benefit from that. Now, on to STEM. I believe that if we have a great STEM program, we would be one of the leaders in the country, would be a leader around the world. It's important to have our eye on the future and the future is STEM. And like Jared said, too, you know, adding arts into that would be beneficial as well. We can't let our kids down. We need to understand that it's not always going to lead to high school graduation, then a career. We want our kids to also pursue higher education. And when they have that strong foundation, that strong background through this program, it only benefits the city because hopefully, they stay here, they work here and they help grow the city in those areas.
Thank you. Brian?
So, having a senior center collaborative with Lynn Public Schools, I would agree. I would support, you know, the multipurpose option. I think it's out-of-the-box thinking. I think that's the kind of thinking that we need right now in our current budget situation. When it comes to STEM, science, technology, engineering and math, it's our future. It's very... It's vital to our current job market. If you look at economic growth and what's out there right now, it's engineering and there's so many different opportunities that we provide right now in our Lynn Public School system, like that's provided by the Cisco program and other programs like that. I think it's important to really expand our current vocational. Lynn Tech is a great hub to really, you know, innovate. I think Lynn Tech is a place that we can innovate and discuss and have this conversation of how to really explore what the best interest is in terms of creating partnerships in STEM programs. I'm a member of the Massachusetts PTA and we actually have, to go back on family engagement, Massachusetts PTA, there's a family... A STEM family initiative that promotes and educates family on, you know, what STEM programs are out there, how to really collaborate with their... With the faculty, with their kids and to really, you know, to fully achieve that concept of what it means to, you know, to raise a child with your community and also administration.
Thank you very much. Next, Donna Capola.
Okay, Donna Capola. STEM, if you think about it, has really only been around for about 20 years. So, we've come a long way when you think of it, but then again, it took a long time to get STEM created. I also, as Jared said, I'm excited about adding the A and making it a STEAM and the arts because there's a lot of kids into design and technology. And adding that in to that would be ideal, actually. But we... For our community, we want our kids to go in those fields. Those jobs are high-paying and good jobs and that's going to make a difference in our community. The other thing is, we really need to support our teachers as far as staff development goes and bringing our teachers along, understanding the importance of STEM, you know, across the whole curriculum. It's a lot of work and some teachers maybe aren't as comfortable. Majority of teachers are female teachers and just like the girls in there, the girls don't seem... They're lagging behind the boys in the STEM jobs. But... So, we have to really work with the teachers. Thank you.
John?
Of course, I'm in favor of a senior center. I'm a senior. And we attempted... We attempted to get one into the Marshall School. MSBA doesn't fund it. So, if you want to put a senior center into any new school that we build, we have to fund it. Lynn will have to fund it itself. As far as STEM, I think Lynn Tech took a big leap when they introduced the pre-engineering department. We're making great strides in our science and technology departments. Again, I also advocate for STEAM with the inclusion of the arts. The issue being, we currently have 100,000 jobs in Massachusetts that are going unfilled because the applicants do not have math and technology proficiency to fill those jobs. I think it's critical. It's a great... It's a big hole in our workforce out there. It's something that the kids really should look more towards advancing their math and science skills. I think the schools right now are introducing programs and we've revamped the science program. We're making great strides, but it's critical to the development of kids and their future.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. You'll be... If you're elected in January, we have a good superintendent that's in office, but her term will be expiring and you'll have an opportunity to reappoint her. But if you didn't reappoint her, what would you do? How would you go about replacing a superintendent of schools if that came up during your term of office? Elizabeth?
Jafra Cialdino, number 7 on the ballot. You know, that's an interesting question. I think we would have to put a... We would have to maybe look at the job description and see if it's still valid or if we need to make changes to it. I would want in a superintendent, a leader. I want someone if... And I'm not saying that the current superintendent isn't. I think she's a great superintendent.
This is not meant...
But I'm thinking moving forward, right, if we had the opportunity to appoint. I would love... I want a leader. I want somebody that has experience. I want somebody that knows how important it is to listen to their staff, to engage their staff and to involve parents, the administration and teachers in their decision-making. That's critical to me because that's the only way you can get consensus. That's the only way. If we can get teachers to agree with some of the decisions, they'll be happier when they're teaching our kids and we want them to be in a good place when they're teaching our kids. Again, I think they need to have the experience. I would like a PhD in education administration. And I would like to see someone... Honestly, I would like to see somebody of color. I would like to see somebody different. I want to see somebody that can really relate to our kids. Over 60% of our kids are Latino. It would be great for them to be able to see a superintendent that looks like them, that talks like them, that understands their language. That's what I would probably look for in a superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Natasha?
Again, my name is Natasha Meji Madri, number 10 on the ballot. And as far as the superintendent, I definitely feel that the job should be posted. There's a ton of people out there that could apply for that job and there's a lot of qualified candidates that I think we might be missing out on if we don't put that job out there and see what's out there and who wants to take on the very important job of leading the Lynn Public Schools. I definitely feel like I would definitely advocate for that and like Elizabeth said, that's a great idea to have a more diverse... So, the applications, I would like to see more diverse applicants and that definitely is a great idea. I love that idea. I think it's so important to have more people in our system that look like and represent our kids as a whole, in every single teachers and lunch aids, everybody. And I just feel that we need to diversify our staff a little more. And as far as the superintendent, I think her job definitely should be posted because there's a lot of people out there that could apply for it and there should be a committee that could interview people and we can definitely do something different, for sure.
Jessica?
So, if we had to replace the superintendent, what I would like to see is a search committee put together. Much like, I work in higher education. I work at Suffolk University. We have a presidential search committee right now. I think we want to search somebody out who can fit all of these qualifications that we're all going to talk about, what we talked about. I'd really like to see as part of, other than, you know, standard qualifications, I'd really like to see somebody who's willing to take a look at the 25 schools in the district and really bridge them together. We want to see equality over all the schools. We don't want certain schools to have better education or better teachers or better services or better buildings that aren't falling down than other schools. We want all of the schools to have the same high quality of, you know, teachers, of services, buildings, all of that. I think we need somebody who can really focus on, you know, bringing some of the schools that are lagging behind up to the standards of some of the best schools in our district.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you. Jared Nicholson. So, if we had this opportunity, I think that we would absolutely want to set up a really strong process. It's a hugely important job. It's one, I think, one of the most important things that we do on the school committee because the superintendent really drives the vision for the district. And so, in constructing that process, I think it's important for us to look at what other districts have done recently in running their processes so we can sort of learn best practices. I try to do that whenever we're thinking about something as a school committee. Well, what are other districts doing? How can we learn from that? And then also, when we've gone through this in the past, obviously, I have colleagues on the committee that have gone through this process to search for a superintendent and we can build on things that have gone well and do things better that have not gone as well. As far as what I'd look for, absolutely someone who has really strong education experience and experience not just in education, but in districts similar to ours, who has performed well in a city like Lynn. And, you know, a willingness to step up and articulate a vision that we all agree with and have the ability to bring the public along with that and really strong communication skills so that we can agree on a vision together with the school committee and the superintendent and have that vision shared throughout the district.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. Michael Satterwhite. So, Lynn is a large school district, so we need to start operating as one and that will include finding a superintendent that has experience in dealing with a large school district. We have a unique situation where our school district is very diverse. Like Elizabeth said, we have 60% of the enrolled student as Hispanic. That's not the current trend in the state. The average amount of enrolled Hispanics throughout the state's around 18%, 20%. So, we have to take the makeup of our schools and we have to find someone that can actually come in and operate in the best possible way. So, we can't think that we're small schools. We have 25 schools. We have... That means public schools. That means we have 25 principals. That means that there's a huge gap between the Level 1 schools and the Level 3 schools. So, we need someone that can come in that has the diverse... That diverse operational skills that can help benefit all students. We need the educators, like Donna said, to... We need the educators, like Donna said, to, to get the, the proper training and continued training, so we need a superintendent that has that in mind as well. So, we have to, to have a superintendent that knows how to put the tools in place, who knows how to deal and manage with our educators, and knows and has compassion for our students.
Thank you. Brian?
The role, the role the superintendent plays in our school system is so important. They would need to be very, you know, diversity, inclusive, as Michael represented, we have a large diverse population that we have in our Lynn Public School system. They have to be innovative, someone who thinks outside the box and is able to really adjust in our current political and financial climate. Someone as a, so, when I think of a superintendent, they're the leader, they're the leader of the Lynn Public School systems, they advocate with the school committee, they work and negotiate with all the stakeholders involved in our delivery of services. Requiring a PhD is definitely important too as well, to be, have that experience also in urban schools, because I think, also, just to mention, we, I think the search committee is a great idea, Jessica, as well as we should look internally as well to see what we, what talent we have right now, see some of the people who are involved in our current affairs in, in education, take a look there. We should do, you know, a thorough search, and I think that role is a very crucial role in terms of just where we want to go and what vision we want to carry with us as a school committee.
Thank you. Donna?
Yeah, my name is Donna Capola, and as far as hiring a superintendent, you definitely need somebody who is a good leader, has experience, especially in an urban school district, and with numbers as large as ours, and with the same population. It's important that they come here and understand and embrace all of our kids, no matter where they've come from, and what languages they speak, but that it be important that all of those kids be treated the same. But also, a willing, for myself, I'm, I'm looking for somebody whose willingness to take some risks and try new things, you know, to shake it up. I'm not happy with level threes, and to do that, I think we need to make some changes. And I'm looking, you know, to the future and hoping that someday, that somebody will come in and be, have some creative ideas, especially like, in particular lines for community schools. We have a community that's really interested in community schools, and I'd like somebody that, that would be an important thing to me. But, we post all of our jobs, but in the final end, you can have all the committees you want, but under ed reform, the people that sit at the table for school committee are the ones that are going to have to do the final vote for superintendent.
Most important vote you make as a school committee member?
Absolutely.
John Ford?
You know, I, I think, you know, obviously, we would, we would pose the position, we would look for any qualified candidates. I would look for someone who, as Donna said, was in a similar school district, you wouldn't want to bring someone in from the western part of the state that had just come into a, a small school district. You've got to have someone with the same demographics that Lynn has, someone who has got similar background to what we have. You need someone, again, what Donna said, the leadership, I think, that's, to be a strong leader, you also need someone that's, that's a multitasker and a hard worker. I think there's a lot of DOE involvement, you have to be able to roll with the punches, you have to be able to put up with, obviously, with 16,000 kids, a lot of changes, you have to do a lot of changes on the fly. I just think we did a great job hiring a deputy superintendent, Patrick Tetwiler, a man of color, we got from the Boston schools, he seems to be a great fit, I've heard nothing but good things from the schools, feedback from him, on him. But I think, it's not an easy task, it's, it's not a nine-to-five job, and it's someone you're going to, someone who, whoever we hire, is going to be putting in long days to get the job done.
Thank you. Lorraine?
I think that we need someone that has a PhD in education administration, like Elizabeth had mentioned. I would like to do a very large search. We definitely need a leader that can multitask, that understands all the standards in Massachusetts and, and the curriculum, and most importantly, communicates well with everybody, with all the teachers, the principals, the staff, that has a vision. I think we need a new vision just to continue our growth that we've made, and I would like to find someone that will help us to continue that growth, so that we can make it to a level-two or a level-one, because it's really difficult to do, but they would understand how to do this, because they would have a strong background in an urban district, and that's what I would like to see in our next superintendent.
Thank you. Next talk, next topic that I'm going to bring up, my daughter, who's on the school committee in Tobsfield, mentioned it to me, and they are having a little bit of a discussion on homework. What would your, you set policies as a member of the school committee, what would your position be on, or what do you think the position of the policy of the school committee should be on homework for grades one through three? Natasha?
Thank you.
Or should there be one? Should be up to the teacher?
Thank you for the question. Again, my name is Natasha Maggi-Madri, and I'm number 10 on the ballot. I think that homework is very important, of course, even starting in kindergarten, I feel that, I know you asked particularly about grades one through three, but I do think it should start in, actually, I think preschool would be even better, but the earlier we start learning good habits, the better the kids will be in the future. I do not think the homework should be really intense, I think it should gradually get intenser, the older the child gets, but I definitely feel that homework is essential, because if you, if you don't have homework, then how are you learning? You need to be able to measure how the kids are doing, so in order to do that, we need to provide homework. I definitely would be in support of homework, even at an early, as soon as the child is in school. Homework is key and essential to learning. Thank you.
Jessica?
So, I think as far as a homework policy, I think, I think homework's a great idea. I think that kindergarten is definitely a place where you can start homework, that it should be simple, I think maybe kindergarten could be a little bit on, you know, the teacher's discretion. I think above that, between, you know, first grade and above, that homework is absolutely important. One of the important things about the homework policy is, like Michael said, he has to sign a piece of paper that says, he looked at his homework with his daughter, this helps parental involvement, this is what we all want. We want the parents to be involved, we want the parents to know what's going on in the classroom. My daughter comes home with her homework, and I ask her every day, what did you learn? What did you learn today? And if, if you're seeing the homework, you can relate to what they're telling you, because kids want to talk about what they want to talk about, and they don't want to talk about what they don't want to share, and the bad things that happen, and sometimes those are the things the parents want to know about. So, the more they're bringing home to the parents, the more it helps the parents get involved. I think it also teaches them responsibility. They have something that they have to take care of, they have to take it from school, and they have to take it home, and they have to work on it, and they have to bring it back. I think this is really, it's a good tool for them to learn. It starts off small, like Natasha said, you know, we're not giving them essays and stuff in kindergarten for them to take home, but I think that it's a small token of them to learn their responsibility, so I think homework is really important.
Thank you very much. Jared?
Thank you, Jared Nicholson. So, I think that part of what this issue is about is about curriculum, because I think it's important for us to be doing things consistently across the district. And I think if there was a problem in that things were happening consistently across the district, that people were not getting enough homework, people were getting too much homework, then, you know, that, that would make its way before us, but, without getting that specific feedback, I mean, whatever's happening in Tobsfield, in Lynn, I don't think there's a need right now for the school committee to be legislating how much homework people should be getting in, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade. You know, I think it's, it's our role to be responsive to our community, and I think that we can absolutely look at what other districts are doing on that, because I know that there has been a groundswell in other towns about people pushing back on the amount of homework that their, that their kids are getting, and I'd be more than willing to entertain those thoughts from parents here in Lynn that are having that experience, but absent that, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't bring it up myself to legislate what teachers are doing currently.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's Michael Satterwhite. My daughter's in the fourth grade, and it was a proud moment when she came home and asked to use my laptop to type a paper. It was, it was something I didn't expect, but she had typed in school, and she had to finish the assignment at, at home, and it was, it was, it was a great thing, but grades first through third, I do believe that there should be homework, and we have to think, okay, we have a discrepancy with regards to the levels that our elementary schools have, there's a discrepancy. There's level-one schools like Lynn Woods, and then there are level-three schools that we need to, to, to bridge a gap between these schools and figure out what's going on. So, whatever we do, we have to make sure that it's consistent and offered in all schools and for all students, because it's important, and we have a large district, so we, we need to look in, into that as well, but a homework policy, whatever it is, it needs to be district-wide because we can't leave anyone behind. We can't. It shouldn't be because you're in a poor neighborhood, you're not going to get that same education than someone that isn't in a little well-off community. We need to make sure that every single student is receiving the same education, especially through grades one through three, because that's when you learn to love or hate school, so we want to make sure that our students love school and they excel. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. Brian?
If it wasn't for homework, I probably wouldn't be here. I was, I, that's, that was my go-to. I think doing homework has been something that I learned at a young, a young age to really appreciate, because it was all about effort. And I've also, you know, I grew up, you know, also in a position where I didn't have no one at home to help me with my homework, and I remember being, being able to, you know, learn self-learning techniques on my own, just being an independent learner, and it helped me out in the long run. It's important to, to also discuss after-school programs, and to have those after-school programs, like No Ceilings, Tony Seifert's No Ceiling After School Program, where they work with student athletes on homework and assignments, because not everyone has access. Again, we have a large district with a variety of different issues at the home, so doing homework definitely impacts each student differently, but it is a, it's a great thing to have in the school system, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Donna?
Donna Capola. Homework, as the mother of four, and the foster mother to 19, there was a lot of crying going on at times, because some of the homework was just too much homework. I think that homework is important, but I think it should be a reasonable amount, but I also think that our schools should have time after school where kids can, who are struggling with classroom work, and, you know, going to go home with that same work and struggle again at home to work on that homework. Someone should allow them time in the school to work on that. And I love Michael's idea with the school, the Lynn Woods School, they're doing it the right way, signing off on it, you know, it gives a parent a chance to look at it and sign off on it, I think that's really important, but I think that, you know, I'd, I'd rather see a very small amount of homework and really encourage reading at home, because I think that our kids need to stop that reading and be consistent day after day, and to me, that's probably even more important than the homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Ford?
John Ford, number one on the ballot, and I, I don't think we as a school committee should legislate homework being given out in the classroom, but I do think even in grade one, two, and three, that we should give at least a minimum assignment, something that, that the child has responsibility for, takes it home to the parents, and then you start with your parent involvement right there in grade one, two, and three. You know, I think it, it is critical, you bring home and you get some, some sort of engagement at home, you encourage the kids to get some engagement at home, and that's the start of the whole process. I think that will, over time, it will then evolve, as the homework gets more, more intense, more difficult, and then the parents probably won't be able to help as much, but, you know, it's a sense of responsibility and a sense of accomplishment when you come in, the next thing you have is your homework assignment completed.
Thank you. Lorraine?
Lorraine Gateley, school committee. What I think about homework as a professional teacher is that it reinforces what is taught in class. When a student takes home their homework and they do their homework, then when they come back to class, I can see what they understood, what they didn't understand, I can bridge the gaps, and I can move them ahead quickly, versus them not doing homework, them not bringing it in. Now, for grades one to three, it could be as simple as we want our students to start reading, so maybe they take some books, and they read the books to their parents, you know, like, they're very simple books, they can read, they can practice their alphabet, they could do simple math, and then they build up to more and more assignments for homework. But again, homework is supposed to be a reinforcement of what you learned, or you're exploring some other avenues, so what do they not know that I'm going to teach them? So, it bridges the gaps. So, homework should be a part of the curriculum for grades one to three, but let's keep it simple. Let's, let's know what our goal is, what do we want the student to achieve, and then let's bridge that gap so that at the end of the year, they're ready to go on to the next year. That's the whole idea of homework. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Tervasil, number seven on the ballot. I like the idea of homework from kindergarten to third grade, I think it obviously creates good habits. I would love to have it standardized throughout our schools. I don't know that that's something that the school committee should legislate. You know, there's a lot of things to consider, I think, you know, having the kids do homework, having the parents sign off does have some parental involvement, but I would want to make sure that they're not penalized if they're not able to complete their homework correctly at that young age, because I think that would bring about to them a negative connotation to homework and to school, and as Michael said, K through three is when children learn to love or hate school, and if at that, at that early age, they're thinking, they're stressing out about homework or not doing it right, they're not going to love school, and we're setting them up for failure. So, I agree with the intent, I think that they should have a homework policy, but I don't think that's something that we should legislate on the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha?
I already went. I already answered, I started.
You started it.
You want me to go again?
Okay. Sorry. Question is, would you allocate the spending of the Lynn Public School System any differently than it currently is?
I would definitely have to take a look at, you know, more specific allocating of where the school systems are. I know that we're short on money, so regardless of, regardless of how everything is being spent now, there has to be another look at it. Every year, there has to be a look at it. We have to make sure that there's enough money to maintain the buildings we have, we have to make sure that there's enough money to pay the teachers' contracts, we have to make sure there's enough money in all of these places, and because, because we're so tight on a budget, there isn't room to just take last year's and roll over to the next year. I think every single year, it has to be gone over with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that the dollars are being spent in places that are really investing in our kids' education. That's what we're here to do, we're providing the kids a service in their education, and we need to invest in that really the best we can, so.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you, Jared Nicholson. So, I've, I've now been a part of two budgets, I'm in my first term in the school committee, and we, we spend a lot of time combing through the, the administration's proposed budget, comparing it to last year, figuring out exactly where things have changed, what the overall priorities are, and I think by and large, the, the school committee, the, the school district is spending money on the right things. We, I mean, the vast majority of our costs are spent on our, our teachers, the human capital in the district, the educators we have, and, and that's as it should be. I think, one example of this is that we got an extra appropriation from the legislature this, this fall, to make up for a change in the chapter 70 definition of low-income students, which was something that penalized Lynn, that, that we had fought for to be adjusted, and because it's a one-time expenditure, we're putting a lot of the money into physical capital improvements, things that are going to last a long time, because we can't commit to new programs that we can sustain on a, on a year-to-year basis, and so, I think making those kinds- And so I think making those kinds of trade-offs are the right trade-offs. Another priority that was in the budget this year, just an example, because what I focus on a lot is the change in year-to-year. We added, Lindtech added a new HealthTech program because the program was oversubscribed by double in the prior year.
Thank you. Michael?
Michael Satterway, number three on the ballot. If you go online to the school's website, you'll be able to see the individual budgets for each school. And they're pretty much consistent throughout the school district when it comes to the 25 public schools that we have. So there's consistency. We use what we have. You'll see that if you look at the individual budgets and the overall budget. What I do want to let people know, everything that we're saying up here, it's our opinion. But we also have 16,000 kids in our school district who have parents or grandparents or guardians that have their own opinion as well. So it's important to give you guys that voice. So one of the things that I've been discussing since I made my announcement to run for school committee is I wanted to create a subcommittee that involves the community. PTAs, PTOs, I want to bring in everyone that has a vested interest in our schools and be able to give them a voice, even utilizing the student governments that are in our high schools. Because they're the ones that are actually currently in the schools, they're actually the ones that are experiencing what we have to offer. So what better way to get the information? Are we doing this right? Are we doing this wrong? What can we do better? So I believe that if you look at the budgets, it's pretty consistent throughout the district with regards to each school. And overall, we're using what we have. Thank you.
Brian?
So allocating spending, I think right now, we need to operate out of a really cautious lens. But we do need to give a voice to the community. I think that's a great point that Michael made, is to funnel, you know, where the needs are. And I think the district does a good job on accommodating the community's needs, but I think there's always room to improve. And also, in terms of just spending, I think we need to go back to the table of how can we get more eligibility for federal grant, state, local monies. It's important to really, to understand that there's a cost to a lot of the needs that we have associated with our type of school district. It's, there's a lot of different issues that cost a lot of money. Social, emotional learning programs, our special ed program, a lot of the operation costs are pretty up, pretty high. It takes a good amount of money to fully fund our administration, which is, I think they deserve every piece of monies that they get. Because at the end of the day, we do have a very highly, you know, again, it's an expensive district. Urban schools have a lot of different issues that require out-of-the-box funding. Also, we have to abide by Chapter 70 funding and to pay attention to how we allocate our money.
Thank you. Donna Capola?
Yes. I have had the pleasure and the difficulty of sitting to work on many budgets over the years that I've sat on the Lind School Committee. And it is difficult. You have a certain amount of money that you're projecting that comes from the state, and you have a certain amount of money that comes from the city, and it needs to be at 100% net school spending. And the budget, how it's put together, is it's built from the bottom up. So it starts with each one of the classrooms, what's needed, how many teachers are needed. The amount of staffing is probably, and the budget is probably 85% of the budget, is staffing. Making sure that the class sizes are reasonable and not too large. The real problem that I see is there's always more that we want to do and that we just don't have enough. The real problem, too, is that the state formula is, just does not work. It does not work for an urban school district, and it needs to be corrected. There's been lots of years we've asked our state legislature, but it hasn't changed. Thank you.
John Ford?
John Ford, number one on the ballot. The state budget, I mean, the school budget starts out pretty simply. A dollar figure is given to the superintendent from the mayor. The superintendent then has to, you know, arrange that. She starts out by asking each school principal what is on their wish list, what they would like to see, what they need, what they want for their school. You then craft that based on last year's budget. You either add or subtract. And then it's presented back to the school committee, and we have a shot at it. We can then look at and see what we think might be in inadequacy or some, or money should be placed in other areas. And we are allowed to make adjustments to the budget and before we vote on it. Contrary to a lot of misbeliefs, we get millions of dollars from federal funding, Chapter One, Chapter Two, Chapter Three, and this year, we added a Chapter Four. And we also have a special education 240 grant money. It's, the issue that we have in the last couple of years is the net school spending issue, where we haven't made, we haven't met 100%. But with the 4.18 million that we just got from the state, I was told today that we're going to be within $200,000 of the 100% for this year, and I'm sure the mayor will make that whole dish up.
Thank you. Lorraine?
Lorraine Gateley, number four on the ballot. I've had the privilege to be on the school committee for two years now and go through two budgets. And I really took my time and I went through the year before's budget, and I compared it to this budget and did checks and balances to make sure everything was balanced. I asked questions. Sometimes Jared and I asked like so many questions that the meeting went on for hours. But I know that we went through the budget, we went through it thoroughly. Like John explained earlier, that we start the budget by asking the teacher, the principals, what we need in the classroom. I get a lot of requests from people around the community, if we can add this, or we could do that in the budget for the following year. I take those requests and I ask if we can add it to the budget. And that's basically how the budget works. I don't see any waste in our budget. I think if anything, we're doing a great job maintaining that budget and meeting all the children's needs in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Tervasio. So I've looked at the budgets online. It seems to me like the money has been allocated appropriately. I mean, you only have a certain amount of money, and I have not seen any waste in what I've looked at. But I still think there's money out there, and that's actually the key to this, going after that money. I understand that we do get federal funds that are allocated to us, but there's more out there. There are more grants out there that we can go and apply for, and we should go after them. Just to make sure that we have enough money so that we can support our children and our teachers in the classrooms. Because our teachers waste sometimes a lot of their monies trying to get supplies for our students, and they shouldn't have to do that. So I don't think that the budget actually right now needs changes. I think we need more money. And that's.
Thank you. Natasha?
Natasha Maji Madry, number 10 on the ballot. I would agree that, pretty much with everybody, what everybody has said, that I'm very happy to hear from John that we're going to be at 100% of the net school spending this year, which is amazing. It's really good. I think if I'm elected to the school committee, what I would make sure is to continue to analyze the budget thoroughly, like Lorraine talked about, put more time into it, even if the meetings do take hours. I think it's very important to go line by line, to really analyze the budget, to look at what we did in previous years, to make sure that we're, our spending is appropriate. Which I did look at the budget, and it does appear to me that we are spending properly. So like Elizabeth said, we definitely need more money in the system. And I also would agree that we need to have a grant-writing team, right? It can't just be one person. So more than one, like maybe five or six people, grant-writing team together to bring some more money into the schools, because that's what we need, more money, so we can have more programs. And I like Michael's idea as far as getting the community involved and having more than just one public meeting about the budget and hearing different people's ideas and how we can move things around. Because, you know, maybe we could have less steak and more chicken, you know, just basically move things around. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we started with you, Jessica, right?
Yes.
Okay. Time has moved right along, so we're going to have to go to the opening statement, I mean, closing statements. I won't get the opportunity to give you two gentlemen a question. We did have, there are 10 candidates running for school committee. One couldn't make it tonight and did ask if we could read a statement. So I'm going to read her statement first, and then we'll go to your closing statements. The 10th candidate who didn't come is Cherish Casey. The committee to elect Cherish Casey for school committee would like to apologize for not being able to make today's school committee forum hosted by the Lind Community Television. Today, Cherish Casey is hosting an event outside her campaign work for our school committee. Cherish is a full-time community organizer with the Essex County Community Organization. Today, Echo was meeting with our local chief McGary to discuss our continued efforts to build relationships of trust between our local law enforcement and the community of Lind. Best wishes to all candidates, Cherish Casey. Okay, we'll begin with Michael, and we'll go around the opposite way for our closing statements. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you. My name is Michael Satterway, and I am number three on the ballot for school committee. I would appreciate one of your six votes on November 7. You can find more information about my campaign on masforlind.com, and I am on Facebook. I know one of the questions that I was eager to talk about was partnerships that our schools could delve in with other entities. And I was lucky enough to be a part of a partnership that was with Digitas, which is a marketing firm in Boston. And this was when I went to Lind Classical in the ninth grade. It was such a good experience that I was able to get out of the city into a bigger city and to actually learn about what people do in the workforce. The marketing campaign was great. I was able to learn so much more than I would have learned in the classroom. And that was an opportunity that I had from the Lind Public Schools, and I'll be forever grateful. I am a product of the Lind Public Schools. I've gone through elementary, middle school, and I've also gone through most of high school in the public schools. And I've lived in Lind almost my whole life. I've owned a property for 12 years, and I'm happily married with a daughter and another daughter on the way, November 2nd. So it's going to be an eventful November for me. So I would just appreciate your support, and if you have any questions, you can reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. Next, Jared Nicholson.
Yes, my name is Jared Nicholson. I'd like to thank Lind Community Television for hosting us tonight and to all of you for watching. If you have more questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm on Facebook and all my content information is on my website, jarednickelson.org. We have a lot of work ahead of us in the public schools. And as an attorney with a business background, as someone who's passionate about public education, and as someone with a record of leadership who's already achieving results, and as a Spanish speaker who is accessible and responsive, I believe that I have a lot to contribute to that work. One of the things that we did in my first term that I'm really proud of is we started a wrestling team in Lind, at the middle school and the high school varsity level. And that's a new program that's now open to kids, boys and girls, kids of all sizes. And it was a team effort to make it happen. We had the support of the school department and my colleagues on the committee. We partnered with an outside nonprofit in Boston with experience starting these kinds of teams. We raised money from the business community to buy the first mat. And we had teachers in the Lind Public Schools who had wrestling experience step up to coach. And I would love the opportunity to continue that kind of hard work, creative thinking, and collaboration on a second term and respectfully ask for one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Murphy?
So my name is Jessica Murphy. You can reach out to me, of course. I'm also on Facebook. You can find out more about me and my campaign at JessicaMurphyForLindSchoolCommittee. That's my Facebook page. The reason I'm running for school committee is because I really think that Lind is sort of on a horizon, and I think that there's a lot of changes coming to Lind, and I think that we can really make a difference here in the schools. The schools are, you know, the future of our kids. We want our kids to learn and be successful and then come back to Lind and be successful members of the community. We want our students to be able to find out early what they're interested in, what their involvements are. You know, not every kid needs to go on to college. You know, kids are learning trades, especially in STEM and STEAM. There's no reason that people necessarily have to go on to get their master's degree. There are plenty of jobs in which we can prepare them for that in the schools here in Lind. So I'd really like to see that happen. I'd really like to be able to bring the community together through the schools, and I'd really like to see the community more involved, be it in committees or fundraisers or just to have a little bit of pride in their school system. There are a lot of families who have kids, and there are a lot of families who don't, and we want to bring them all together in our city.
Thank you very much. Natasha?
Thank you. My name is, again, Natasha Maji Madry. I'm number 10 on the ballot, all the way on the bottom. And I am running for school committee because I really want to give back to Lind. I love the city of Lind, and I feel that I'm more than qualified to take on this position and this role. I have lived in Lind for 19 years. I am a mom to five wonderful children, three boys, two girls. And I really believe that I can bring a parent voice onto the school committee. I am also an attorney. I practice immigration law and personal injury and family law. And what I really want to make sure of is to work on parent engagement primarily and community schools and as well as special needs advocacy. Special needs advocacy, especially because I have two kids that have special needs, and I saw firsthand how hard it is to really sit through an IEP meeting and navigate the system. And I really want to make sure that parents know their rights so they can advocate for their children, whatever their needs might be. I really want to be your voice. I really want to be not like your average politician, just more like a person, a community member, that I have been for all these years. And I want to be accessible, return phone calls, and talk to everybody. So I'm open, I'm a very open-minded person, and I'm asking you for one of your six votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Tervasio, and I'm number seven on the ballot. I grew up in Lind. I'm a product of Lind Public Schools. I have two children currently enrolled in Lind Public Schools. So I have firsthand experience with the Lind Public Schools, not only as a student, but also as a parent. I have served as a public servant throughout my professional career and served in the U.S. Army Reserves as a mental health specialist. And I really think I have the skills necessary to make a difference on the school committee. I'm running for school committee because I really think all the children of Lind deserve a high-quality education regardless of the zip code they reside in, and I want to help make that happen. I believe I can enhance the work that the committee is already doing and could bring a fresh and different perspective. I hope I can count with one of your six votes on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lorraine? Gateley?
I'd like to thank the Lind Community Television and you, Mayor Dividilio, for having me here tonight at this forum. I am Lorraine Gateley, and I was born and raised in Lind. I'm number four on the ballot, by the way. I attended Lind Public Schools, and my son attended Lind Public Schools, K through 12. You trusted me in the classroom for 33 and a half years, teaching your children science and introduction to engineering design. During my first term, I have treasured being your strong voice on the committee. I enjoyed representing you, and I would love to serve two more years. So if you would kindly give me one of your six votes on November 7, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. John Ford?
I am John Ford, again, number one on the ballot, and I want to thank Lind Community Television and former Mayor Albert Dividilio for having us here tonight and presenting us opportunity. I'm a lifelong Lina. I'm a homeowner. I've been married for 51 years to my wife Sheila. I've got four daughters, two of which are Lind school teachers. I've got five great-grand, great-grandchildren, not great-grandchildren. They're special grandchildren. I have a master's in education. I've got 30 years business management experience. I recently retired from the state of Massachusetts, finally. And I look forward to two more years as a full-time member of the Lind School Committee. I would really appreciate one of your votes. Again, number one on the ballot, on November 7, one vote is all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Donna Capola?
Yes, my name is Donna Capola, and I'm married to Harry. Yes, my name is Donna Capola, and I'm married to Harry, and mother of four children, grandmother to five wonderful grandchildren, and been a foster parent to 19 children over the years, and all of them have been in Lynn Public Schools and different schools. I decided to run for school committee a long time ago just because I was an active parent. I never considered myself a politician. I just feel as though I wasn't happy with what I saw, and I knew that I could make a difference sitting at the table. I feel as though I have made a difference. One of the things that I pride myself in is that I'm really known in the community, that people can call me, parents can call me. I can support them. Sometimes they just have questions that they need answered. Sometimes they have concerns. But they always know that I will do my best to help them, set them on a track so that they understand what is Lynn Public School is all about, and that they can feel secure and safe with us taking care of the kids. And I just ask you for one of your votes on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. Brian?
I want to start by saying it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you, Lynn Community Television. It's been an honor. It's a privilege, and I'm so grateful to be here tonight. You know, this is really a dream of mine. Growing up, I really didn't have much. I'm the son of Liliana Viguer Acosta Yanos. This is my mother. When I first came to the station today, I put my mother's picture on my desk next to my father's picture of me on Chatham Street as a three-year-old kid. Because at three years old is when my mother passed away from cancer, and I was transferred and I was brought back from Venezuela where I was born to Chatham Street in Lynn on a third-floor apartment. I started off with nothing, zero. There was no food, no money, nothing. I've built my career on integrity and never given up. I have a bachelor's degree, a master's degree. I'm a strategic planner for Framingham State University Alumni Board of Directors, where we are, we have just recently successfully fundraised $100 million in the last five years. I just was recently appointed to the San Jose Alumni Board of Directors, where I'll be serving as a strategic planner on Civic Engagement Committee, on the Youth Outreach Committee, and also the Development Committee. I dedicate the public service, and I've always knew that was my passion growing up because I've felt what it felt like to get given to. And the city of Lynn never gave up on me, and I won't give up to the people out there watching us tonight. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much. To the people watching, before I go into our closing statement, I do want to acknowledge that I've had an opportunity to talk to each of these candidates tonight, and you cannot go wrong voting for any one of them. They are truly outstanding individuals, each and every one of them, with a great background and a very strong sincerity to help each of the individual students in the city of Lynn. And they do need people who care, and they do need leaders. And I feel very strongly that you will not go wrong voting for any one of the nine people that are here that I have met tonight. And I want to congratulate each of you. It's not an easy job running for office, and you're probably taking on a job as a school committee member that is probably one of the hidden jobs, that people don't realize the hours and the time that you put in. So I thank you each for taking on that challenge and the responsibility that hopefully you will get when you're elected. The next forum is going to be held on Monday, October 23, from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock. It will be the Ward Council of Candidates. It will also be broadcast live. And the last forum will be held on Monday night, on Monday, October 30, for the candidates for mayor. The forum will be taped, and it will be broadcast between the hours of 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. We would also like to announce at the same time that we will be having live election results on Tuesday, November 7, from 8:00 to 9:30 p.m. There will be panels here who will offer their opinions, however expert or not expert they are, and reveal the results as we get them. Everybody feels they are an expert that's a politician. We understand that we're not going to get to all the topics that everybody wanted to hear about. One that Michael mentioned at the end were partnerships, something that's very important for the school department. We did have a lot for every school at one point when I was mayor, and I know they don't exist as much today. There are a lot of new businesses in the city, I think, that would love to adopt a school. And I would encourage each of you, if you are elected, to go out and do that, and if you need any help, please contact me. I'm not just here tonight. I care for the city of Lynn like each of you do. So we urge the people, if you haven't had an opportunity to see tonight, this will be replayed. You can tell your friends, and they can also find the various events that cable has taped at other events during the past week on YouTube, or they'll be played at different times on cable. So tell your friends and neighbors, if they haven't had an opportunity to watch tonight, please tune in at another time and watch the various candidates and see the talent that we have that are willing to take the risk to run the city of Lynn in a very difficult and challenging two years that will be coming up. Thank you each and all for being here tonight. We truly appreciate your sacrifice and the efforts that you're putting in to help the city. Thank you. God bless you all. Thank you. 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 Thank you.